Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the NORAD Planning Board, April 10th, 2023. We are at the NORAD Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street. We are at go-to meeting. You can dial in at 401-646-2388. PIN number 517092088. We have a couple of things on the agenda tonight. First thing we have to discuss is the Planning Board reorganization. At this time, I will entertain a motion for the positions of Chairman, Vice Chair, and Clerk. Are there any nominations?
Yes.
Mr. Shan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to nominate Brian Hatchey for Chairman, Debbie Holman for Vice Chairman, and yourself for the Clerk.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, are there any other nominations?
Do we need any other nominations?
Just asking.
No, nothing.
Seeing none, we'll put that to a vote. The vote is for Brian Hatchey as Chair, Deb Holman with as Vice Chair, and Ernie Pachekowski as Clerk. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Derek's not going on this one.
Very good. Brian, it's all yours. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Pachekowski.
Oh, Derek's up there. Okay. See Derek on the screen.
Oh, he's there. So, the first matter before us is a continued public hearing for the 1125 to 1175 Boston Providence Turnpike, which is continued from March 13th. This is the FM Global property request for major project special permit and site plan approval. I believe that 705, right? Is that when we had it on the agenda, Sarah?
Yeah.
Yep. So, it's my understanding that we have a presentation from the applicants.
Before you start. If I could say something?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Rob, please. I just have to stand going forward, so I'll be outside. Give me a text or a call when we're all set.
I'll go down to Lois' side.
Derek Mason is the Planning Board's Associate Member. He has authority to sit in on hearings that have special permits, so he is available online. And because he's online, a roll call vote for any votes held must be taken to acknowledge his online presence.
And?
Derek has filed proper disclosures to participate in this hearing.
There's no need to reread the notice, right? All right. So, I guess with that ready, do you have any applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. And I'll stand if you'd like.
Whatever makes you comfortable.
We're right here with you, so if this works.
As long as they can hear you.
We'll keep it simple. I think we can be brief this evening. For the record, my name is Peter Tam. I'm an attorney with Gulston and Storrs on behalf of the applicant, Hobbs, Brook, and FM Global. We last met with you on the 13th of March. We provided a full presentation, so we're going to keep it short and be responsive to your questions this evening. With me to my right, Scott Turner from Environmental Partners Projects, Site Civil Engineer. And to his right, Charles Clay from Payette, who's the project architect, who you met the last time around. Also behind us, Brad Cardoso, who's Vice President and Director of Design and Construction for Hobbs, Brook. He is our client, as well as members of the team, including Jim Thompson, Shawman Construction, should you have any questions relating to the actual construction of this project. But we won't get ahead of ourselves. So, what we'd like to do this evening is briefly touch on updates, and specifically updates to the plans, as well as to the architectural renderings, to address questions both from staff, and to provide you some comfort that each of those items has been addressed in the updated plans, as we said we would. We did, in fact, since we last met with you, submit the entire package of plans, again, with all updates referenced, as well as a memo identifying where you can find each plan and each change. And to your planning director's request, we also submitted additional renderings, conceptual renderings of the buildings, both the principal building as well as the garage. Charles, we'll take these in turn. Scott will touch on the plan updates, and then turn it over to Charles to talk about the updated rendering.
Okay.
So, would you have a presentation, Sarah?
We'd be very secure.
I have it in my pocket if you need it.
I would very much like that.
Okay.
I think while we're waiting for that, I can give you a brief update in terms of the context for the updates. I think for the large part, all of the updates are modest and technical in nature. For instance, if a grease trap wasn't identified, now the plans reflect a grease trap on the plant. The most substantive changes that the board should be aware of, you may recall there were questions regarding, from Public Works, regarding their preference as to whether a redundant water line, potable water line, coming in from Pleasant Street along FM Global Way to the rear of the property, whether or not it was warranted and should we evaluate it. And I think on that singular issue, which was probably the most important of the issues that were identified, our team took a close look at it, and FM Global is prepared to follow through with providing that redundancy. So, bringing a potable water line in from the line on Pleasant Street through FM Global Way provides for a redundant water to the project and to the site.
Great. Because, Sarah, Mark's memo, Mr. Ryan's memo is part of the record here, correct?
Yes, that's right.
And he does recommend that line, so thank you very much for it.
So, that, and you'll hear this from Scott, that is not yet reflected on the plan set. I think Scott expects that that would be a separate plan, but we would be prepared if the board would come, with the condition of approval indicating that we are taking steps to advance that additional water line connection.
Now, there were other matters that I believe had been posed as potential conditions of approval. Do you mind running through those?
We, in fact, provided, I didn't want to be presumptuous, but my colleague and I provided a draft decision with conditions of approval. I actually don't have it in front of me, but from memory, I can tell you, the water line was one question. And so, it might be helpful if I can pull my notes.
No, we can work through this note here. It sounded like adding water gate valves and removal capping of a water main, is that part of one of the? Yes. Yes. Do you mind just explaining what's being, what the accommodation, what the change is from the original proposal, just for purposes of everybody listening? What exactly is changing from the original proposal to the modified version? Okay, so we have a presentation, and at the end, we actually have, we address those. We're up and running, I guess. Okay. So, my name's Scott Turner. I'm a professional engineer. I'm the civil site engineer with Environmental Partners, as Peter mentioned. And so, we received a long list of revisions, including revisions that were written from the town engineer's office, as well as other comments that were received during our Technical Review Committee meeting. We did a presentation just to kind of show you some of the things that we did in response, but not everything. So, what I want to do is just, we put this together to give you comfort that we made all the changes, and we did meet with Sarah on Friday morning to go through the changes. We are real confident that we collected and made all the changes requested by the town engineers, but if we go through, we'll just go through what the revisions are. So, for instance, there was a request to have a grease trap to catch all the kitchen waste. This is the location of it on the plans, and this is a detail of it. When I talked with Mark, what he mentioned, we mentioned that the building is still undergoing design, and the location could move a little bit. He wanted it captured on the plan simply so that it was on the plans and is part of the approved plans if you decide to approve a project. So, here it is. It may shift a little bit location, and he was fine with that, but we are including the grease trap. Next comment, my next slide. One of the comments we received from the fire department was to make sure we had emergency access along the northeast corner of the building, and the slide shows that we have added that. We also wanted access to the electrical telephone pole that we're proposing at the southernmost entrance to the site, and that's what's highlighted on the lower left-hand corner there. Next slide. The town engineer also required us to provide drain profile plans, and so that's what we did. We spent effort doing this, as well as sewer profiles, which I believe are on a subsequent slide. Yep, here. And then, next slide. There's a request, there was an ask for how we were handling trash on the project, and we have a trash compactor that will be located in the loading dock, similar to the grease trap, but the final location may slide a little bit, but the intent is to have it in the loading dock location, very close to where this is, if not in the exact location shown on the plans. Next slide. There's requests to have native plantings as part of the landscape plan, and so this is a, just a cutout of our planting, of our plant list. We've gone through this with Conservation Commission, Conservation Agent, and so we have assurances from our landscape architect and verified by town staff that these are all native plantings. Next slide. And then, there was some discussion about a structured canopy leading between the garage and the building. So, it's our intent and our hope to build this canopy. However, we are crossing an MWRA easement, and everything that goes in that easement is subject to MWRA approval. So, we have these notes saying, proposed easement, subject to approval by the MWRA, and we are working with them to obtain those approvals. Next slide. And these are a couple of elevations regarding the garage, regarding photovoltaics, Charlie.
Yeah, sure. So, the idea with the parking garage, we talked about last time, was that we want to have it PV ready, which means that the structure is ready to support the overhead steel that would be there to support PV array above the parking on the top deck. So, as we talked about before, this would be in excess of the height of the current structure, which would just be concrete. And the other thing that this drawing shows is that we have, our two pedestrian accesses are facing towards the building and not going away from the neighbors. We're keeping the highest things away from the neighbors.
PV ready means ready for solar?
Yeah, oh yeah, I'm sorry. Photovoltaic ready. So, it just basically means that the, if you can imagine, you need to put down posts that hold this up, and they have to withstand a lot of wind load. So, if you don't design the structure that they're going to attach to for that, it's almost impossible to do later on. But that's all. The wiring, all the rest of it will be done in the future.
Okay.
And then, the other thing we changed was, we'd originally called for screening the parking garage towards the building occupants, and so we've eliminated that. So, parking garage, looks like a parking garage.
The screening was facing your building?
It was facing our building. That's what we've taken out. Next slide. That was put on in a moment of not thinking it through. And then, the rendering. So, we talked about this a little bit last time. This image, we actually had, the view from Route 1, if you were headed, I guess that's north back towards Boston, and so we deleted the Jersey barrier in the middle of the street. This gives you a sense of the view of the building divided up into four different elements. You can only see three of them here because one of them is hidden through a crook there, but it's an idea of creating a relatively large building and breaking it up into pieces so that it feels a lot smaller. So, we're very excited about the dynamic view and these three, four canvases that face towards the street so that we can tell the FM story and we can see into the building at night, really enjoy the life that's there.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a moment? I know it's an artist's rendering. Is it close?
It's very close for the building, but we've eliminated all the trees that are along Route 1.
But the building itself, is this kind of what it's going to look like?
I mean, we're still designing it, but yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. We get a lot of artist's renderings, and then we go. Okay.
Yeah, we're still, you know, working through some details on the metal panels, which is the material, you know, between the windows, but there's strong support at the level for those on glass facades facing Route 1. That's not going to change. We're, you know, look at color and texture of those metal caps.
Okay. Thank you.
This is a view from the other side. So, this is, we talked about the idea that there's this kind of informal landscape along Route 1. This is the more formal landscape, the place where they can do company-wide events, you know, projects, things like that. And so, it's a more flat lawn kind of area, and it's looking back towards the dining facility, the thing that requires the grease trap. But that dining facility is in the lower right-hand corner there, but it's all lit up, that first floor, exactly where it is. So, that idea is that they can come out at lunchtime, daylight today, probably be eating outside. That's going to be a big change. But it's a little protected from the hustle and bustle of Route 1.
Yeah.
And then, this view is standing in front of the main entrance of the building. You can see the canopy to the right, and we're looking back towards the parking garage. So, it's a plain and simple parking garage, but it's connected with this canopy that goes over the MWRA easement. We're in the process of designing the canopy. We're going to try to simplify the underside of this so that it reads more as a kind of a simple plane, but the key part to understand about it is it needs to get from 11 feet up in the air on the right to 13,6 in the middle of the MWRA easement so they can drive a truck underneath it. So, that's part of the design challenge. It's going to be way up high in the air, so we've got to work on that. And then, the other thing we're doing is we're designing it in these sections that step up in height, so that if we have to throw our negotiations with MWRA, design it so that they can get a crane and remove a section of it, you know, for some heroic repair job, that that will be doable. So, we're quite optimistic. That's all making sense, and we still have to continue our discussions with them. And then, the last image is now looking at the parking garage from the other side. So, we were standing previously to the far right. Now, we're at the sort of the southeastern corner, maybe sitting on the Bach Toyota parking lot, looking back towards the building. So, 1175 is to our right. It's a parking garage. The most important thing here is that it's wrapped with trees, and so it's going to be screened. We're not showing you opaque trees or suggesting that they're 50 feet tall on day one, but they will be there. They've got room to grow. We're really optimistic this is going to make this a beautiful thing, but it's going to take a few years.
So, these last few slides are about those additional DPW comments that we received on Thursday afternoon. So, we have one slide for each with three comments. Because we received them on Thursday afternoon, we didn't have time to get them to the revised plan set. So, the first comment was, he asked for gate valves, basically valves to turn off the water supply into the building, one for the fire service and one for the domestic service. So, that's what we have highlighted in yellow. The next slide is regarding termination of an existing line that runs through a property located at 656 Pleasant Street, and his question was to make sure we terminate that line on the 656 Pleasant Street property. So, we do need to gain access to that property. FM Global has a very good relationship with the owner of that property, so we don't expect that to be any kind of an issue. But that was his comments, and so we added a note in yellow on the utility plan notes to that effect. Okay. And then, the third comment was regarding extending the line, or extending the new water service and having a direct connection to the new line on Pleasant Street. And so, that's what that sketch depicts, that connection. So, we have some more work to do with DPW, but the intent of FM Global, the intent of the project team is to work with Mark to make sure that we make that connection. And we expect it will be a direct connection from that line to the FM Global property. What does the existing line of Pleasant Street service, does it service any of the current buildings? I believe it just runs through that property, and it may service, we believe it just services FM Global property, but it's not in good condition. It's in disrepair, and that's why our original design did not include that connection because it's a maintenance issue. But the new line will take care of that, and so we're bringing the new line and just continuing the old line. Great. And that's really, that's our presentation. So, there were more comments. We addressed them with responses provided by Peter and his team. If there's anything in particular you want to go through, we can talk about that. I believe we can echo the sentiments from last time where the materials were presented in very efficient and straightforward manner. We thank you for that. I guess now it's time for the board. Mrs. Holman, do you have any questions?
Do you have a start date?
We do. Jim Thompson, Shawman, nature. We're pretty much prepared to go whenever, you know, the board, you know, sees that we provide approval to the project, and then we need to speak with Gary at Palatira at Town Hall, or, you know, building department. Other than that, we're ready to go.
Sure. And then, do you have a finish, approximate finish?
Approximate finish is the middle of 2026. We have a few phases to go through first. We have to do this summer, utility enabling onsite because there's some interconnected utilities between the 1151 building, which is being demolished, and the other buildings which remain operational onsite. So, there's fire alarm that has to be rerouted, there's fiber intel data lines that have to be rerouted, some other underground work we have to get done, as well as put the new parking lot behind the learning center that's on the site plan and the new service road so that the hotel has overflow parking, because when we take over the large phase to build a new building, some of the parking that they currently use is lost. So, the new parking lot's important for them to continue.
So, you probably told us this last time, but we're building all these buildings, we're going to raise everything that's there eventually? Not the learning center and stuff, but the big building in the front? No?
The yellow.
Just the yellow building is going?
Yeah.
There's two small buildings in the back, so it'd be south of the learning center.
I wonder if we can pull up the site plan just so that the board is clear. It has been a month since we spoke.
Yeah.
Keep going. Keep going. Yep. Actually, that's probably good. So, there are small buildings.
Hold on, standby. Just want to share this with the online.
So, there are two small buildings located here and here. Windows will be removed. Okay.
And then, ultimately, 1151.
Yes, of course. Okay.
So, the project, while it's an expansive site of approximately 40 acres, the project confines, as we showed last time, is really limited to a central area of about 18 acres.
Okay.
But the learning center and Simzone will remain.
And the learning center is only about, what, 10 years old, maybe?
Yeah, 2018. We built it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All set. Derek, do you have any questions for the applicant? Concerns?
Not really. I think you guys covered everything. Excellent. So, yeah.
All right. Mr. Shan.
I just want to know, are you all done with the Conservation Commission?
Yeah. It was two days after we went before you, two days after we went before you the first time, we were in front of them with a request for the termination of applicability. They really liked the project. They issued negative determination, so we don't have to go back to them for a notice. We're not doing any work within a jurisdictional areas. All right, great. Ready?
Just two questions on the parking garage. The material, I don't know, Sarah, if you could bring up that shot of the parking garage in the back, a four-story with the opaque trees in front of it. Is the facade going to be relatively the same look as the building?
No.
No?
No. It's going to be precast concrete, conventional parking garage material, and actually, we're trying to have it be a little different from the building so that we don't make the building feel bigger than it is. So, it's, the stair tower, we're laying a little bit in color.
I think you just got by it, Sarah.
That was a, there's a better one here.
Yeah, if you go to the two, because it tells.
Right there.
So, from this perspective, we want it to just be light in color. We don't want it to be that dark color necessarily, a little bit darker than regular concrete, but not as dark as the main building might be. And then, this material here could be related more closely to the main building, but the idea here is for this to just go into the background. You don't spend too much time thinking.
But it will be not just a bare cement building? It'll have, be painted or something?
Well, no, I think the concrete could have a tint to it, but it'll be maybe lightly textured, but it's.
Concrete. It's going to be, it's going to be a bare bones parking garage.
We're trying not to make it look like something it isn't, if that makes sense.
All right. I thought, initially, I thought if you make it at least the same facade, it would look like it's part of the complex or whatever. This, staying on the parking garage, as you look at it, there's lighting inside a parking garage where there's no, where you have, you know, the open sides, and there's no screening. Inside a building, you have windows and things that, any night lighting that people work in at night are dim. At 2:00 in the morning, are we going to drive down Route 1, or are we going to see four floors of white lights?
You won't be able to see the lights because they're going to be tucked up into the structural system. So, part of our overall approvals process, our lead application, we have to keep those light fixtures concealed so you can't see directly into.
So, it won't look like.
Yeah.
You know, at 2:00 in the morning, and the neighbors aren't going to complain, look down on, beautiful. And other than that, again, I just, like the chairman said, I said it last time, you know, thank you guys, you know, for a project this size, it's extremely prepared, and appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Joe?
Just one more question. You mentioned the leads. You're going for the gold, is that it right at this point?
We are going for gold. We're not giving up there. We're going to push as hard as we can, but we're committed to gold.
Great.
If you ever get to the point where you're putting up the solar panels, does that push us up?
We don't even push this over the edge, no. It's not going to be that close, unfortunately. The new energy code is so stringent that it actually makes it a lot harder for laboratory buildings to get credit for some of the things that we used to get credit for in the past, which is good for, you know, the country, you know, pushing for sustainability. It just makes it a lot harder to get those.
Your job. Thank you. Anything else from the board, or are you all set?
All set.
All set. Is there anybody from the public here to talk about this? Joe, or online, is the public here, right? Nope. Derek, you're all set?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Sarah, do you have any comments or anything to offer?
So, in my memorandum I provided to the board in advance of this hearing, I've stamped and have a copy of, I recommended three conditions of approval in addition to your standard conditions, which include good housekeeping onsite and abide by all other state requirements that they need to obtain, that sort of thing. I would recommend a condition requiring the submission of a certification by a registered landscape architect at the close of the project that certifies all landscaping has been installed as approved on the site plan. I recommend the condition of approval for the two items on the memo from Mark Ryan that the applicant has a great track address, but didn't have time to properly. that the applicant has agreed to address, but didn't have time to properly include in the whole plan set.
Yeah, that's the whole thing.
So the condition of approval would be that that be incorporated into the final plan and submitted to the town.
Grease traps in the water, in the water.
Dual gates.
Dual water.
And then Pleasant Street.
We had three items, yeah.
Go ahead. Yeah, sorry.
Gate valves at the building.
Yeah.
Extend the water line to Pleasant Street.
Yep.
And discontinue the line at six, the existing line that comes through 656 Pleasant Street.
So in addition to those, it would be requesting a certificate with regard to landscaping? And then the standard house.
So a different, yeah, a different condition would be that they have to submit a final plan incorporating Mark Ryan's comments that they've agreed to comply with.
Essentially a fourth condition.
And to, they would have to submit that plan for Mark Ryan's approval and before the building permit is issued.
Okay.
As a condition, as a condition?
Right, because we don't have a plan set in front of us that incorporates those changes yet, given the amount of time between that comment being submitted by Mark today. So you don't need to continue this until they make that plan.
Right, but you don't have to come back to us. You can check those off.
Exactly. You can make sure that it gets signed off on by Mark Ryan. He's content with the final plan. And with his approval, then they'd be free to proceed to the building department for any of their requirements.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
A second. We should have a vote, a roll call vote on any such thing? Okay, a roll call vote on Mr. Patchikovsky's motion to close the public hearing.
Aye. Chairman. I have to say my name?
Yes.
Debbie Homewood, aye.
Brian Hashi, aye.
Joe Sheehan, aye.
Brady Vachkovsky, aye.
Do you need Derek? Do you need Derek?
Derek Mason, aye.
Okay, 5-0, motion passes. Are there any other motions before the board?
I think we're ready to vote.
I could vote tonight, yes.
A motion to approve upon the four conditions we discussed. I don't have them all written out in front of me.
I do. One is certified landscape architect at the completion of the project. We have this disconnect the line coming in that Mr. Ryan asked for, the water line going out to Pleasant Street that Mr. Ryan asked for. And there was one other.
Dual gate valve things.
Gate valves that Mr. Ryan asked for. And then the final one, Mr. Sheehan, would be the final plan would be submitted with Mr. Ryan's approval on it.
Before the issuance.
Housekeeping is standard, or do we have to make that a condition?
What's that?
Is housekeeping standard?
That's one of the standard conditions. Yes, always.
Is there a second?
I will adopt those.
I'll second Mr. Sheehan's motion.
Okay. There's a motion. Mrs. Homewood?
Motion to approve with those four conditions. The four, did we go up to five? Four?
Aye. It was four.
Four, okay. Debbie Homewood, yes.
Chairman says aye.
Joe Sheehan says aye.
Brady Vachkovsky, aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Derek Mason, aye.
I always say Brian Hashi says aye. Yeah, sorry. I thought I, I used to hear you say that.
That's it.
5-0, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, just as a point of clarification, the vote was both for the major site plan as well as the special permits that were signed.
Do we need to?
You should take a separate vote.
Separate vote, so what we just took on the site.
On the major special per.
The major project special permit.
Is what we just did. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve site plan approval.
I'll second. All right. Motion to second, Mrs. Homewood?
Debbie Homewood, yes.
Brian Hashi, aye.
Joe Sheehan, aye.
Brady Vachkovsky, aye.
Derek Mason, aye.
He's not, Derek, you're authorized to sit in on special permit hearings, but you don't have a vote for the site plan review.
Okay, sure.
All right.
Sorry.
Motion passes 4-0. Okay. Thank you for the point of correction, compliments.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Bernie, you didn't ask about your tubes.
They're coming up.
You can't change that.
I made a notice of them when I was out on site the other day.
They'll be coming up pretty soon, their whole run.
The daffodils coming up right now.
They're beauteous. They are.
All right. Well done.
Thank you very much.
We really appreciate it. Thank you all.
No.
Looking forward to seeing you come on.
We're losing our whole audience.
All right. Okay.
Derek, was that your first vote as associate? No?
This year.
No, you voted on the hospital.
Did he?
Because Rob had the.
Oh, Rob is out here.
Oh, Rob back.
Right?
Win for Rob.
Oh, did somebody text him? Do I have to keep this? And all eight, other 800 of them that I have?
Yes, you do, Debbie, because it'll be.
Don't let them go.
I can't. I'm going to have to buy another house. I have no room.
You can be twisted.
Well, I can't, you can't read it. Is it getting smaller? Am I just?
When we continue hearings, save them when we continue hearings, but once we've signed off.
But I can't read it any, is it getting smaller or am I getting older? Don't answer the last part of that.
It is getting smaller.
It is? Jeez Louise.
Somebody shows up your house and asks you for that plan, you have to have it.
I'll just let them into the room where there's about 1,000 of them and say, help yourself. Take some stuff while you're here.
Well, moving past public hearings, planning board business. The next agenda item is a request for site plan approval, 115 Nord Park South, Frank Gilio, I believe, of 14, 1144 Properties, Inc., Irene Coleman of Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors.
So, yep, so this application was requested to be continued to April 24th by the applicant and his engineer. We did have a site plan review meeting. A number of changes were suggested by town staff, and they needed a little bit more time to address them and felt that they wanted to come back to the board when they were prepared.
All right, so a motion to continue?
Just, Mr. Chairman, do we have time on April 24th to fit this in? We do? Okay, because there will be a lot of business that day, that night as well, so. Okay, I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing till April 24th.
Is that? Is that a roll caller voice?
Roll call. Rob's back.
All right, Mrs. Homewood?
Yes.
Mr. Bamber?
Yes.
Motion to continue April 24th?
Just, you can say, it's, you don't need a roll call.
Oh, okay.
Because Rob's back.
Oh, perfect.
Rob's back.
All right, so we have a yes, yes, aye.
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 5-0, motion passed. The matter continued to April 24th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Okay, the next agenda item is a request for signed site plan approval submitted by 714 Washington, excuse me, regarding 714 Washington Street, Restorative Massage and Wellness, Oscar Burian and OJ signed and on it. Do we have anybody here on that? Let me see, Mr. Burian?
Yes, hi.
Hi, good evening. You're on. Tell us what you're, what you'd like to do.
So what we want to do is pretty much just remove and recover the existing sign. The awning will change color and just pretty much put the new business name on the balance part of the awning. And everything's going to go back. What we do, we will check all the installation hardware to make sure that everything will be okay and ready for the new awning.
So you're affixing a different colored canvas on top of the existing awning that's there?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody on the board? Mrs. Homewood, do you have any questions?
Yes. Is it the canvas that you're going to replace to turn to green, correct?
Correct.
Is it going to be the same material as the other two sides?
Yes, similar.
Okay. And I know Sarah put in that we were over the something or other. Proposed awning will measure 93, but that's already up there.
Yeah, it's a pretty.
It is.
Okay. And I'm thrilled that you're keeping the awning because I think that is an improvement to the look of downtown over the plastic signs with the plastic letters. And what are you, what are the letters made out of that will affix to the canvas? Is it written?
They will be painted on the canvas, so they're permanent.
Oh, you're painting it on? Okay. And are we doing these two lines? It seems redundant to me.
No, that's just.
You can say that again.
Are we doing, no? What?
Yes, there'll be two, two lines of text. This is per the client's request, I believe. There's two different businesses or, I'm not really sure about that. This is just what my client asked for.
Okay. It's your business. Seems a little small to be able to read those two lines to get it on that balance, doesn't it?
That was my thought also.
They're saying restorative massage twice and wellness spa, or wellness twice.
I can, I can look and I can see Mug and Muffin and it jumps out at me, and I can read that probably from across the street. I don't know who's going to be able to read this from across the street or if they read it.
Driving by.
Or driving by, there's so much to read, they'll probably run into someone else. I don't know.
All right, well, I guess that, we have nothing to say about that. It's just the dimensions of the sign, correct?
Mr. Patchikovsky?
Yeah, good evening, sir. Has the, has the applicant been in touch with the landlord on the color of the awning that he's, we're taking, you know, a nice solid blue that runs the whole block and we're cutting out the middle to change it to a green? Is the landlord okay with this?
I believe he is. We were in contact with him and he did approve of this as well.
And he's okay with changing it to blue? I personally like the straight blue. I think it makes the block look nice, but what do I know?
I actually agree with you, Ernie, but I don't, I mean, I guess we can't.
As long as the landlord has been, has signed off on this and he knows he had changed the color in the middle of the awning.
You have any?
No, I agree with Ernie, but I've got nothing further. Looks good.
Sarah, any thoughts from planning?
No. So this is, like I said, preexisting, non-conforming on the sign area. It's permissible. You recently approved a sign, site plan approval for the former Mug and Muffin when Crazy Tacos opened. Same material, you know, same construction, obviously different color, but otherwise this is in compliance with the bylaw.
And there's really nothing we can concern ourselves with regard to the text or the, yeah. Very well. Is there any motion on the floor?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Mrs. Homewood?
Yes.
Mr. Bamber?
Yep.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0. I mean, 4-1, excuse me. Late. All right. All right, so looks like you're all set, Sarah.
Oscar, thank you for coming, and I will be in touch with you within the next week or so about your approved certificate of action that you can then bring to the building department to resume your building permit application.
All right, thank you so much.
All right.
Have a good night.
I misplaced my agenda. There we go, sorry.
Approval of the minutes?
Oh, yes. Next, thank you, Joe. The next item up is approval of the minutes from March 13th, 2023, March 14th, 2023, and the joint planning board and board of selectmen meeting, well, it was that night, the 14th. So has everybody had a chance to review or are there any questions or concerns about the minutes from those two meetings?
No.
Any motions?
Motion to approve? Both?
Second, there's a motion and a second, starting with you, Debbie?
Yes.
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 Motion to approve is passed 5-0.
Mr. Chairman, before we move into executive session, I did have another, just small administrative discussion topic that I want to make sure happens before we go into executive session. We have a site plan review application for the Mercedes-Benz dealership that's right on the Norwood-Westwood line or by the McDonald's by Route 1. Technically, the vast majority of that business lies in Westwood. Its address is in Westwood. That's where its frontage is, is on the Westwood side of the town line on Route 1. However, a portion of that property is located in Norwood. And according to our bylaw, they have to comply with our requirements on that portion of their lot. They do trigger site plan review under our bylaw. So I've been coordinating with the applicant as well as the director of community development in Westwood, and we think it would be the most efficient thing to do is to conduct a joint review of that application with both planning boards. That way, any suggestions that you make, you can try and coordinate so that it doesn't read very obviously, you know, what side is Norwood and what side is Westwood. So my recommendation.
What side is Norwood? Isn't it right by McDonald's, right, the little strip of land or something?
It's the part that's closest to Everett Street. So I'm recommending that we have a joint meeting on May 22nd. It's a regularly scheduled hearing night for you. She is working to see if they can get a forum together on that night, but what I wanted to ask you all, they are still meeting only virtually. And the question for you is, do you have a preference for them attending in person? Or would you be comfortable with the Westwood Planning Board phoning in remotely and conducting the hearing that way? Or do you not feel strongly about it?
I mean. I guess my first thing, going back to where it's only a sliver in Norwood, do we really need to have a joint meeting?
It's a decent enough amount of their parking lot, and the actual building portion that will be changed is on the Norwood side. So, yeah, I would say it's substantial.
The building is in Westwood, right?
So they'll be installing, I think, a portico access on the Norwood side. So it'll change traffic circulation.
I prefer in person, but I'll.
Change some landscaping, some parking.
They always do a nicer job in Westwood than we do, so I, but I prefer in person also.
I mean.
They're coming to us or are we going to them?
We would be hosting them if they came to us in person.
Oh, pressure's on.
I don't have a strong opinion. I mean, in person is obviously better, but if they have their own preferences of the way they conduct business to do it via Zoom, who might have challenged that?
All right, I'll relay those messages back to the Westwood director. All right, I'll relay those messages back to the Westwood director.
And that's May, oh, that's a regular meeting.
It's our regular meeting, yeah, so it makes sense to have a.
So that concludes, we're going to executive session at this point?
Yes, so.
Are we gonna go back and do other business? I have one request.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
I'm just, I talked to Sarah today about getting the next couple of months' meetings. I'm going to ask again if we could possibly, as a board, go to view the properties as a board. Go view them like you used to do when Mr. Bamber was on the board. You know, go walk around them, so I'm not going, which way is over here, which way is over there? It was very helpful. Who was up at Prospect with me? Weren't you?
We only allowed it up there like two at a time, or not even, one at a time.
Yeah, two at a time.
Yeah, because of open meeting laws issues, it must be.
Well, if we post it and say we're going to view on a Saturday, I mean, the planning board and the zoning board did that for years and years and years. They went every Saturday and told at the meeting.
Because technically, then that's an open meeting. And so if the board members are going along, then any members of the public can go along too.
Right, but they always announce you can't ask anything or whatever. I guess we could check with that young man over there, but.
I think it comes down to the property owners perhaps not wanting members of the public coming onto their property necessarily if it's an open public meeting.
So it's not part of our, I mean, why did, why did we always do it and then stop doing it?
I don't think we always did it. I think whenever I was on, I think it would happen just once in a while, once in a blue moon kind of thing.
I think I've gone to two in 20 years.
Well, we went, the 10 years I was on the zoning board, they went every weekend, every Saturday.
Different board.
Well, but then I was on the planning board with Mr. Bamber. Mr. Donahue stopped coming for a while, but they were all going. I just think it helps us know what we're talking about when we're saying this is east, west, north. Here's where this is, it gives you a better idea of what you're voting for based on actually looking at the physical property.
It might be a, I mean, there was one particular application that we did do site visits that were prearranged individually and maybe in particular instances, it might make sense, but I don't know. I don't know if we can adopt any sort of policy.
Yeah, I think we take it as, take.
Case by case.
Case by case. That's how we had done it in the past.
Derek raised his hand, which I don't think he has.
Derek?
Yeah, I, you know, as an architect, it's always good to go to the site and see things. I'm here in another state at a project and it's always good to be there and see it. So I'm on the side of Debbie on this, but I also understand the open meeting laws and how do we balance that? So I think it's good and beneficial so we can fully understand what's there, what's going on. Only so much you can see on Google data and so forth. So, but again, there needs to be balance. Everyone's scheduled. Not everybody, you know, is retired.
Well, certainly, your suggestion's well taken. It's something I think I can think about.
Maybe we could ask.
There's nothing before the.
I would just say to Mr. Sheehan's point, we have in the past, we've never done it as a normal course of business. I know the ZBA has. We do it on a case by case basis. If there's something that really needs to be looked at, we can talk about that particular thing. If there's any board member that would like some more information or would like to go see a site, I am, most applicants will accommodate that board member to take them on a tour or whatever so that that particular board member could, you know, look at something they maybe don't understand or whatever and, but I don't think we've ever set it up where we've, only rarely have we ever gone as a board and looked. Not saying it's a bad idea, it's a, but I don't think we have to go look at every site. I think we take it as a case by case basis and again, any board member that wants to go, any applicant will, I'm sure, make accommodations for the one or two board members to go.
The planning office is ready and willing to help facilitate that, whether it's two by two or the entire group or just one person who wants to see, we can help set that up. Anybody wishes to take advantage of that.
Okay.
Very well. So we're ready to move to executive session?
Yes.
So, we're much reading through the script here, pursuant to.
And then he, then.
And then he'll turn.
And then he'll turn.
Does everybody need to clear the room?
So pursuant to Master and Law's chapter 38, section 21, it is necessary for the planning board to enter into executive session. So, reading through those?
Yep.
In order to review or approve executive session meeting minutes from January 30th, 2023, it's the first item, to vote whether to release or withhold them from disclosure if the publication may defeat the lawful purposes of the executive session and for discussion with attorney David DeLuca, town council, regarding litigation of 596 Boston Providence Highway. The board will not reconvene following the conclusion of executive session. Do I have a motion to convene an executive session for the purposes stated?
So moved.
Seconded.
By roll call vote, please state your name and your vote. Mrs. Homewood?
Debbie Homewood, yes.
Rob Bamber, aye.
Brian Hashi, aye.
Joe Sheehan, aye.
Brady Pachakoski, aye.
Derek Mason, aye.
Does Derek vote on that? Okay.
All right, before you proceed, Derek and Lynn, I will email you a new link. That's a private Google Meet for the purposes of executive session, so just check your email.
Okay.